Hey, do you ever go back on this? Do you ever look back on this to me?
It was pretty good. How about you?
All right, can't you tell? I ate until I couldn't eat anymore.
Because I didn't do it right being the day. And I think I did like the next day. I'm like, oh, no.
One moment. I'm having a chair.
Mr. Jordan.
I think that we switched some nameplates around and just making sure that the voting will be reflected. Where Mr. Humphrey and Mr. Mar chief are. Maybe they might need to just move into those seats.
Do we need Mr. Jordan?
He will be coming for.
Do we need to wait for him?
No ma'am, go for.
Good afternoon, everybody. We welcome you to the Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, Cattle Parish Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We'd like to call this meeting to order. We will start our meeting with an invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. And if you would like to join us, please stand.
Look us bow. Father, we thank you for being so loving and so kind and so merciful to each of us. We thank you for the portion of health and strength that you've given to each of us. In all of your majesty and your splendor. Now, as we are assembled ourselves in this place, Lord God, we ask that you lead, direct, and guide us. We pray that all things will be done decently and in honor and respecting one another. We ask all of these blessings in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Would y'all please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey, Mr. Brown. Okay, before we start, I'd like to go over some opening remarks and procedures for the meeting. So if y'all will just bear with me. Again, welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting for the Cattle Parish Planning and Zoning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have PZC comment slips at the speaker's stands down here in front of me, next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please, at the podium, state your name, your full name, your mailing address, and a zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in the order that it appears and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson, three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on the agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 PM tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon filling out, once again, an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda items. All of the PZC's board zoning recommendations are submitted to the Cattle Parish Commission for a final decision. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the governing body about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all your cell phones while the board is in session. This commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Okay. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Five, which is approval of minutes from the meeting from October 26, 2022. Do I have a motion, Board?
I move to approve the minutes from October 26, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the meeting from October 26, 2022, from Mr. Brown. Do we have a second? Second for Ms. Hart. Okay, we're ready to vote. All right, we have six to zero on approval of those minutes. Thank you, Board. All right. Bear with me just a second. Mr. Clark, I thought on this portion of the agenda we had an open mic for anyone that would like to make a comment that's not related to the agenda items. Is that correct? Did I overlook that?
We generally have a consent agenda, but we don't have one today.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we're good to go to number six?
Good to go.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to our scheduled hearing, public hearings, case number six. Excuse me, Agenda Item Number Six, Case Number 22, 23P, Special Exception Use for Lennard Construction. Is there anybody here that is the primary spokesperson for this application that would like to come forward? Okay?
How are y'all doing? I'm Ben Leonard, owner of Leonard Construction and Remodeling. I'm here today to seek approval for this ADU dwelling at address 10668 Goldsberry Road. So what we are planning on doing is building a forty-five-foot-long-by-twenty-nine-foot-wide structure. The front half being a livable space with a full kitchen and then behind it being an eight-hundred-and-forty-one-square-foot shop, all under one roof. And we propose to bring the height of the structure down to eighteen foot on the overall height of the structure. And then we plan to do a lot of landscaping on the side and in the front of it.
Right here is the street and this is the existing house here. And this is our proposed dwelling here. And we plan to have landscaping all the way across here and down the sides of the property line and then all around the front of the new structure. And this is the front of the property looking in. And as you can tell, the property line is right in here somewhere. I'm not exact, but the new dwelling will be right back here. And so all this will be all in line with the new truck. Trees and shrubs all along it to hide, you know, from the street view. Yeah, this is the street and this is the house over here on this side. And this picture's across the street. And this is the other direction heading south. Do you have any questions, remarks in this that I can help answer?
I have one for you.
Yes, ma'am.
We talked in our work meeting about the buffer requirement for this particular addition. What, and we talked about the possibility of a fence being used as a buffer here. Is that something that you've considered?
Yes, ma'am. It's definitely a possibility. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I have a question. Is Leonard Construction the owner or just the contractor?
The contractor. I do have the owners here.
Okay, it's my understanding a building permit was not taken out?
Yes, it was.
Staff, is that correct?
I would just have to yield.
I don't know how you get past zoning with a building permit.
We're not aware that a permit was taken out. We'll check and find out.
I could pull it up on my phone right now.
Okay. No, I just wanted to know.
Sure, yes, sir.
Mr. Oren, I have a question. Could you go back and show? Well, I would like to see the property line again.
Sure.
Where the property line is drawn. Is there any space between you and the neighbor next door that has the fence up?
Is there any space? Yes, ma'am, there's.
And how much footage is that in between?
It's on that flat you got up there, right there.
It looks like thirty-three.
Thirty-three foot.
Okay.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, has anyone talked with you? There were some stipulations and some things here that didn't quite meet the code for what's being applied for here. We talked in our work meeting about possibly deferring this case so that you would have a little more time to work out the details with the staff on some benchmarks here that need to be met. You already mentioned the height of the building was going to be reduced to eighteen feet.
Yes, ma'am.
With this ordinance, it's quite clear to me from the work meeting that we had that there is some significant, I'm going to use the word significant, barrier requirements so that that dwelling cannot be seen from the street. That's just how the ordinance, that's how the code is written. So there was some concern among us as to whether or not there needed to be more time to maybe sit with the staff and work out the details of how to get that done. Because right now, as this application sits, the staff is not recommending approval. And so we don't want this to be a case that we want to be able to give ample time and opportunity for any of the deficiencies to be addressed.
What is that timeframe?
Next month's meeting.
Next month's meeting.
Next month's meeting.
Thirty days. We shouldn't say thirty days, whatever the next month is.
What if we defer?
That's what they're considering.
That's what we're asking.
Okay, what if we do not defer? What's the?
Mr. Clark, you want to give us an answer on that? Because we didn't really like address that because we really felt like the deferral was the thing to do. And so like, what are our options from the board? Or stipulations, I guess. That's what the question becomes.
As you always know, Mrs. Newbert, you have the alternative of accepting the staff recommendation, which I think is not to approve. Or you can defer the case and direct the staff on some of the things that it can look at that you have concerns about to negotiate with the applicant. Or you can just approve the application.
Because, you know, look, we are doing an ample amount of landscaping around it and we're considering putting a fence up, you know, to obstruct from the street view.
Mr. Jean, can you speak to us about what the deficiency was in the landscaping, please? The landscaping plan that was submitted?
I don't think we got.
I don't know that I knew exactly.
I think that those were some of the reasons, Mrs. Newbert, that we were involved, that we were suggesting that we possibly defer this application and not deny it so that we could talk about the maturity of the landscaping. I mean, because if we're going to put minor landscaping, it will have no bearing whatsoever. Are the fencing, are the possible flipping of the building so that the pronounced, the front of the building is not facing the street to give the impression of another single-family dwelling? Those were the reasons that we were suggesting, because we never got to a point of exactly where we agreed of what would make this application acceptable in accordance with the ordinance.
So let me ask you this question. Orientation with the way that the structure is designed, it looks like it is a second home on the property. And that's, am I correct in the way I'm stating this? Is there any opportunity to redraw, redesign that front entrance so that it might be something that you can use your layout? Because in the picture I saw, your plumbing looks like it's already installed.
Yes, ma'am.
Rough end, anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
Can that be reevaluated?
We can discuss it. I mean, absolutely. But I, it's a possibility.
What we're trying to achieve here is there's been time involved in this. There's money on the ground. You've paid money to this agency. We don't want you to lose any of that. So we're trying to figure out a way to work this out where we can get you in compliance with the codes in a way that it will be easy for us just to give you an approval. Or if that required a deferral, we would even be interested in doing that to give you time to work it out with the staff. Mr. Clark, Mr. Jean, is there, procedurally, how could we move forward today from this board with stipulations if we do an approval with stipulations that would cover the needs that need to be addressed by this board for this application?
I think two things you've taken into consideration. The first thing is we have just confirmed that there was no permit issued for this particular application. There was a permit applied for it, but it was not issued. So therefore, we did not go through the permitting process to where all of these things could have been worked out in. But if you're so inclined to not listen to the ordinance requirements and approve this, you can approve it with whatever stipulations that the board deems necessary.
Okay, so did I just hear? Hold on just a second. Did I just hear that you said that there was not a permit applied for? Is that right?
That is the information that has been relayed to me from the permit center that a permit was not issued for this particular.
As of right now?
Yep. And you can also check with Mr. Jordan as the zoning administrator. Go right ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Oh, the permit has been applied for, but it has not been issued.
Is applied but not issued?
Only because of this situation here, of the special permit use.
But it means that construction was started prior to the issuance of a permit.
Okay, is there anybody else that has a question? Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
I actually kind of speak for the motion just on the approval, just because, I mean, these are people that own this property. They're wanting to put a second structure on it. I don't see why we should tell them they shouldn't be able to do that because of zoning requirements with the UDC that a lot of us don't really agree with, with a lot of the stuff that's in there. So, I mean, we've known this. We've seen this time and time again. Issues that come up because, I mean, we have all these requirements. You can't have gravel. You, I mean, there's just crazy requirements that just don't reflect our area. And I understand that, yes, the MPC is just trying to follow the cards they've been dealt. But in this instance, I don't really think we should hold up these people from trying to enjoy the use of their property and build another structure over a fence or some bushes. I mean, I think that's something that we, as a body, can put stipulations in place that aren't over burdensome, that these landowners can be able to do what they want to do with their property.
And still meet their requirements.
And still meet the requirements.
And that was why I was asking about the stipulations.
Yes, ma'am.
Because time is money and I'm in this business and I understand. But we do want to try to make sure that we get things as close to possible or else we'll have the codes.
In all due respect to the board, that's what we were proposing to do.
Madam Chair.
But we ask you to consider a deferral so that we could come up with solutions that allows this property owner to build his exceptional dwelling unit. But we were asking you not to just totally ignore and disregard the ordinance, whether you like it or agree with it or not. It is the law of Cattle Parish. And we were just asking you to let us sit down with the applicant and come up with a solution till such time as if it's deemed appropriate that the ordinance is changed.
Okay, Mr. Humphrey?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I concur with Mr. Clark. First of all, that should be evidence of proof where there has been a permit to actually construct the building. And that's evidence. And that should be for all citizens of Cattle Parish. And if you have that, then all well and good. But I concur with Mr. Clark about deferring this case.
Okay.
I have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Mar chief.
In the report, we noticed that you had to upgrade the septic system for the new kitchen and bath in the new structure.
Correct.
And that's done and approved.
It's approved, but it's not done.
Oh, it's not done. But you intend to do it.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Anybody else? Ms. Hart, Ms. Green, anybody?
Yeah, I do have one question. Mr. Oren, on the front side of it, what they're talking about, the facing of the porch, the entrance way.
Yes, ma'am.
And to Mr. Clark as well. If he do another design with that and keep everything like he got it for his plans on the building with his plumbing and all that in place, if he do some other type of design and not looking like it's another house on the property, you know, facing off the porch, will that work if he get with you all and come up with another design in other front part of it?
And that was part of the reason that we were suggesting that you possibly defer and continue in order for us to sit down and work with the applicant with it.
Mr. Oren, how do you feel about that?
It's Mr. Leonard.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leonard.
No problem.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Mr. Leonard, how do you feel about that?
Well, being that in this neighborhood is in a small cell division where our neighbors are very, are separated from the property line and there's several other of these structures in this neighborhood. And obviously, they didn't have to go through all this. So in talking with my customers, we feel that our design here is the best way to accommodate their needs of wanting to have the structure built. And by doing that, it would look completely wrong in the structure of how it's built. Like, their whole thing is off the back of the porch and they wanted to see their structure with their front porch of the new structure. You know, they're sitting there, you know, it's just, it doesn't align with our criteria, our design, I should say, of the all-in-all design. And we want to try to keep this as is as best as possible to build a fine structure for them.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, and it just seems to me you could keep it the way it is and just put a fence or some bushes in front so that people from the road can't see it.
Absolutely.
And he could go about his business of finishing this house for his clients and not having to wait another month and have materials sitting around. You know, I mean, I know building stuff, it's, you're on a timeframe. He's probably got other projects he's going to start on soon. So I hate tying this up for a month over a fence and some bushes.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Leonard. Okay, let me just a second. I'm going to call you up. Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak in support of the application?
My name is Malcolm Carey. I'm one of the owners of the property. I have with me my neighbor on both sides of the house, another neighbor from right across the street. And the only reason my backdoor neighbor couldn't make it is because they work. What we're trying to do, I'm not sure everyone's on the same page as what we're doing. We destroyed a shop that was already there because it's forty years old and needed to be redone. And since we had to redo this, my wife wanted a she shed. And since we had to redo this, my wife wanted a she shed attached to it, and suddenly it becomes a dwelling, and wow, we're here. So far, I conservatively estimate that this little deal right here has cost $4,000, not including the fee for the deal. I really don't want to go any longer, okay? Whatever I need to do. I was given a, a choice of landscaping or both, fence, whatever, so that it didn't look like a single-family dwelling from the street, another dwelling. Fine, we're planting trees. They're red-tipped patinas. They come six foot tall, they will grow to 25. You, you space them four or five feet apart, they grow together. It's a fence. It's a country setting. I didn't want to put a fence if I don't have to. The look of the place, I, I think we may have some... They're partying, trying to get this thing to look better. And that's all we were trying to do, is make it look nicer and not look like a shop, although I need a shop. That's what I do. I build. That's my, you know, hobbies, I guess, are all in my shop. And she wanted something too, so, you know, since we're redoing the thing, it became a dwelling, I guess. We'll do whatever we need to do, but I would beg not to put this off another month. Thank you very much.
Okay, hold on just a second, because I do have a question for you.
Okay.
Are you in a HOA?
No.
Okay, we don't deal with HOAs here, but I just needed to know. So there's no restriction for the fence on the property?
It's not even in the city, you know, so, I mean...
Okay, I'm just, some HOAs restrict fencing.
The only thing that I know of is that your property has to be at least 90 feet off the center line of the road. And this is way behind the house that's already adheres to that, so...
I just wanted to confirm that the, that the fencing was a possibility.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
I'm not going to fence the front, I'm going to fence from the back of the house. I have it on the plan. It separates the backyard, that was the whole point.
Okay. Do we have any more questions? Okay, go ahead.
And you went right to where I wanted to go.
Okay.
So, tell me the feat again from the road, and help me to visualize, how do you get there from the road?
Can you put that, one of his pictures? Okay, that one. Okay. This, and you can't see it, right there is the back of, one of my neighbor's, his backyard. And you can't see, there's a dumpster in the way of part of that. But that's the property line, he was, he was right at the edge of that. This is on an angle. I own all the way up to this tree and over. So you're going to, there's a, I actually do have a, a, a drive all the way around the back. You go down the driveway and you go around there, but you can also make it through the yard this way. There's no driveway that way. I'm not doing that. I mean, we're not living there, so it's just a she shed.
So you will not be entering the back portion from the main road?
No. We come down our driveway to the left side. Okay, this is the existing driveway. We will be going back through here, and I wanted to be able to go in, into my shop from the side because of the elevation. Everything is on a slope. There's a couple of different reasons. Plus, we wanted it to look better in the front, that's all. I didn't necessarily, I don't think there's anyone here opposed to, to what we're doing. They love the fact that it's going to look better, and they're all my next-door neighbors.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Oh. Well, she thinks that, you know, we, we could probably show, this is one that's, the people died and they've let it grow over. But this apartment that you can barely see, you may not be able to see that on our at all. Can you see that? There's a building there.
Right.
That was an apartment. That's a third of a mile from our house. This one, I can actually see this dwelling from my backyard. This is another neighbor on the circle that was behind us. I did the blinds on it. That's what I do for a living. And they actually have someone living there, and no one's ever said anything to them. No one's ever going to be living at this place. We are going to live in it for a very short time while we gut and remodel the main house. That's the only time anyone will ever live there.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget your picture, sir.
No.
Anybody else that would like to speak in support? Please come forward.
Hi. There we go. I don't have a slip, so...
Just give us your name and your information, and you can...
I'm Daphne Stevenson. My husband and I live on this side, if you're facing this property. We are thrilled about any kind of positive residential development.
What is your address?
10674. So we're to the left. This is a, this is, this, all of these properties right in a row, none of them are fenced. They're on very large lots. There are several mother-in-law suites up and down the street. There's one way in and one way out, and you see these structures all through the neighborhood. But with these large lots, no one's really fenced. The fence, if, if you require a fence, it will look different than most of the houses in the, in, on the property. Not the landscaping, certainly, but the, the fences would make it look awkward and odd compared to what's out there. I'm a real estate agent, and for the, the property value of this, this property, it's, it's going to just really multiply, and I just don't see any negative behind it. The fact that it's got the look of a single-family home, it's way smaller, so it's obvious that it is a she shed or a mother-in-law type dwelling, and it's consistent with what is there as well in the neighborhood. And I keep, I harp on that, but, but I think it's very important to know that this, the plan, as it sits, with or without the landscaping, is, and whether it can be seen from the street or not, is consistent with what the neighborhood is. Okay, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. And that was, your address was the same street, was that?
10674 Goldsberry.
Goldsberry, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for this speaker?
No.
Ms. Clark? You're good? Okay. All right, thank you, ma'am. Do we have anybody else that would like to come forward in support?
My name's Alan Schlichteimer. I live at 10667 Goldsberry. That's my view of Malcolm's house. I have absolute, not only do I not have a problem, I encourage him. As Daphne pointed out, the only effect I think we'll have out there is increased property value, and I don't see any downside.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you for coming in, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else here that would like to speak in favor of the application? All right, do we have anyone in the chamber that...
No.
Oh, come on, I'm sorry, didn't see you.
How y'all doing? I'm Joey Bowman. I live to the right of Malcolm.
And your address?
401 Goldsberry Circle. Even though my front door faces the street, it's, mailbox is on the circle, so... I just want to reiterate that there was an existing structure where they're building the new one, and what's being built is 10 times better looking than what was existing in the first place. So I don't know if that has anything positive, but I don't have a problem with it. He's my next-door neighbor, everybody gets along out there. It's just going to increase, increase property value out there. It's going to look great.
Okay. Any questions, anybody?
Nope.
Thank you for coming in. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? All right, do we have anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none?
I just have a question for the staff.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Clark, is there anything else that would delay that hasn't been addressed with this subject matter?
I think that, you know, I think that if we acknowledge the truth of what we have before you, then we can get to the possibility of the plantings. Because I heard the owner say that, I think he didn't want to do a fence. We can get to the plantings and possibly, we think that if it's, if you're so inclined, the plantings, if they're, they start out being planted at six foot, they will suffice with this not being visible from the street and maybe something that's acceptable since. It's not, although neighborhood support is not the primary reason to approve an application. You have no persons saying that they are, would be negatively impacted by this being allowed to happen. So we're comfortable, if you're so inclined to approve the dwelling with the plantings in front of, of the, the structure.
Thank you. I see a family that just want to enjoy the fruits of their labor.
We're, we're comfortable with that if, if, I heard that those, those plantings will be placed in front of the structure. We're very comfortable with that if you're so inclined to approve it.
They want to enjoy the fruits of their labor, and I'm glad the wife getting what she wants.
That's important. I'm glad you said that. I was going to say something about the she shed. Okay, do we have any more questions from the board? Okay. All right, I think we're, any more, do we have any more just... Okay, first of all, let me ask, we're at a point, I think, where we need a motion from somebody.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve the exception use, special exception use, with the stipulation that the elevations be revised to reduce the height of the structure to the maximum of 18 feet as required by the parish UDC, and that the owners get back with the staff to work out the screening requirements that we're asking to be placed on the structure.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, I'm going to shorten this, with stipulations as stated. We have a second by Mr. Brown. Any need for further discussion? Okay, I just want to make sure that the applicant knows that they will be working directly with the staff on the barrier, okay? Screening the barrier, okay? So y'all be working hand and glove on that. It's very...
We feel comfortable that the contractor is well aware of that.
Right, I just...
He will take care of it.
I'll honor for the record. Okay. All right, I think we're at a point where we're ready to vote? All right, the motion passes on a six to zero for recommendation on approval. Thank you for coming in.
No. Five to one.
Five, I'm sorry, wait a minute.
Five to one.
This over here does not. I'm sorry, we have five to one, excuse me. It still, it passes out five to one with a recommendation for approval.
Yeah.
I just didn't read. Okay, that takes us to the next agenda item, item number seven, case number 22-28-P, zoning request from NWLA Investment Properties. Do we have someone here that's the primary spokesperson for NWLA? Come forward, please. Safe travels, guys.
Jake Overton, 417 Brighton Court, 71115. We're proposing changing the zoning for our lot to industrial one in order to provide tractor-trailer parking in this area. Noticed expanded use of tractor-trailer usage throughout the city and the need for parking, and we've been looking for spaces for a while to start to provide that. When we purchased this land, it was advertised that we would be able to use it for such input for a zoning change, and now we, we're just at the point where we need to have the zoning change to move forward. We didn't provide any plans for it because we don't have any structures, but we do intend to fence the entire area, provide security footage and rockets so that monthly storage can be used for that purpose, and also any RVs or anything like that that the community would like to use for storage there.
Any questions, sorry, for the applicant?
Oh, yeah, when did you purchase the land?
About five months ago.
Five months ago?
Okay, I have a question for you, sir. Just so I can completely understand the use of the property. So it is going to be a, for truck parking, or trucks of some sort, parking. Do you expect that there would be any situation where people would be there with their motors running, you know, diesels and Toris for that, where they run on the...
None.
Okay, so strictly parking?
It'd be stipulated in our leases that it's strictly for parks, so, so storage use. And we would have security footage, so we would know who's out there and be able to regulate that.
Okay, so no rumbling of motors and things of that nature?
Correct.
Okay?
I have a question.
Okay.
Do you have any timeline needs of how quick this needs to happen for you?
We would like to be able to have it up and running in about six months, but...
So when you say you have a security footage, are they saying that you're going to have security on ground at all times, 24/7?
Cameras.
Or just the cameras?
Cameras.
Okay, and also you mentioned about the fencing. Okay, but the truckers, how are they going to get in and out and with the trucks if you're going to have a fencing gate up?
When you leave space, we give you gate codes.
Okay.
Do you have a, I'm looking through your packet just to see, I, I don't see an indication of what the height of that fence is.
It was going to be an eight-foot fence with the security wire above it.
Is that something that we need to work with him?
We, we will deal with that, that's what we're discussing.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure we didn't...
In the site plan process, it's just, you're addressing whether or not to rezone the property from rural agriculture to industrial.
So he'll submit site for y'all, to the staff, and then it'll be approved by staff? Okay.
Let me ask you another question. It appears from the photographs that I've seen that the, the site is currently covered with vegetation, with trees.
Correct.
Can you tell me what kind of trees are on, or is it a mix of hardened, soft wood?
It's a mix.
Okay. And are there any very large trees on the site, or are they mostly relatively new growth?
Relatively new growth. I believe it was cleared about 15 years ago.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have one other thing. If we go down the road to approve this, would it be possible for you to leave some of the trees around the perimeter as a landscape buffer?
Yes.
Adjacent to the fence?
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions? Ms. Green?
I have a question.
Okay, Ms. Clark?
Yes, sir. How far back is this going to be your entrance way, you know, with the trucking coming in? Is it...
How far? I'm sorry?
Is the fencing going to be right up there, close to the entrance way, or are they going to...
There will be fencing close to the property line up until where the driveway is, and it will set back. Does that make sense?
So you'll...
I guess, I guess...
Yeah.
There will be room for an entire 53-foot trailer on a tractor to pull forward into our driveway before they enter the gate.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I guess one of the questions too about the fence is, is it, is it a privacy fence or is it an open fence? So if you're driving down the road, you can look through the gate.
Right now, we have it as a cyclone fence, but we were considering doing a privacy fence along the side where there is the one residence.
Right. Okay.
What type, what would that, what impact would that have on the traffic? Do we know?
And Stephen and I were just talking, I mean, the, the site plan will inc... And, and Stephen and I were just talking, I mean, the, the site plan will incorporate a lot of different entities, and one of those will be the traffic engineer, traffic engineer from Louisiana Department of, of, I forget the name, L, L, L A D O T D. But if they will work out what, you know, the impact will have on the traffic, and make the determinations of whatever needs to be done in order to ensure the safety. But that, if I'm not mistaken, that's a four-lane highway down in that area.
Yes.
And it, and it's not a whole lot of traffic, uh, in that particular area, so it would not, you look at the pictures that were taken, I mean, it's not gonna have that much of an impact on traffic.
Have you talked to D O T D about?
We have. We've started a conversation, and I...
Are you gonna have to build a crossover lane?
I'm not sure yet. We're developing the, the culvert with Architect right now, and depending on what he says, whenever we send our culvert plans in, he'll give us placement.
So, Mr. Clark, whether or not it would require a dedicated turn-in lane, that would all be determined by D O T D, correct?
Right, and that will happen in the site plan process, not, not before you.
I gotcha.
Uh, you're just making a determination of whether or not it's appropriate to rezone the property.
Okay.
From rural agriculture to I-1.
Sometimes we go a little ahead of ourselves, but it's, it's inquisitive by nature because we want to know the application.
I need all the questions too, so it helps me along the way.
Let, let me ask the staff another question. If we leave the zoning as is, it's my understanding he can ask for a, a small development package, he can submit that way.
Five, probably acres, so.
And, uh, and then we have, then we have, that issue goes away of zoning change.
That issue would go away, uh, you know, he would have to, you know, reapply for the PUD, and, uh, he needs to be informed of all the requirements of a PUD.
Let me, can I ask a question, Mr. Clark? Um, Mr. Jean, Mr. Clark, um, so it's zoned R A right now, but we could, could we give him a special use permit to operate under R A? No? I see Mr. Jean shaking his head. No?
That's why he's applying for I-1.
Okay, I'm just, we're looking for some alternative.
Uh, you know, and, and I hate to keep beating the barrier of bad news, but, uh, you know, you look at the, the property, and we've shared with you that, uh, spot zoning is never good, uh, and there is, there is industrial property to the north of the site, but spot zoning is never really good. So, you know, but with a PUD, uh, you know, then that would require, in order for him to be able to get the use, that would require some amenities that, 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 uh, he would have to provide for the site, in the site plan approval process. That would make it more, uh, acceptable, but spot zoning is never really appropriate or desired.
So, under a PUD, because that's not what he applied for here, I'm hearing you say he would have to reapply, would he lose his money for what he's paid for now? Money's always an issue.
We could let him, uh, we could let him apply as, as a PUD.
And roll it over?
Yes.
Would that be something you would consider? I know it's gonna slow you down a little bit, but I think next month...
I would, I would consider it, but, I mean, I would prefer to...
Do you know what a PUD is?
Um, I have a slight understanding.
Okay, so, Mr. Jean, you, can you just give him, or Mr. Clark, just an explanation of what, the mitigation?
Okay, what a planned unit development, we call it a PUD, what it is, is it allows the base zoning, so the base zoning's R A, allows that to be in place, and you provide through the site plan process, you provide amenities that would, would be in exchange for the ordinance relief, or in other words, the use that you're seeking. So in this particular case, it would remain R A, he would only get the use for truck parking. But, and what we use that, we try to, you know, mitigate or take care of issues that may potentially negatively impact the surrounding area, and we look at that and we try to resolve those issues while we do the plan. So you would have to have a site plan developed in order for us to go to this direction, because we use the site plan as the tool to design the, the PUD. So that, it may take you a little time, that you're gonna have to have somebody provide that, and we would need to be going through those issues with the state as well. So whether we can do it in thirty days, you'd have, we'd have to really get on our roller skates and move quickly.
Or you could just approve the I-1 zoning.
Yeah, and I, I mean, you've got so much I-1 to the north of it, it seems like, yes, I know that we're saying it could possibly be spot zoning, but it seems like this area's kinda going that route. And I've always been under the understanding that you start with R A, and R A is what you rezone from to other things. Like, I mean, it says it in the paperwork right here, all the properties that have been rezoned to B two, B three, I-1, you know, this property was rezoned from R A E, you know, so, I mean, it's just like, R A, that's what it's for. You start out with R A, and as stuff develops, you move into a new zoning, and it seems like this area is moving into this I-1 zoning, because it's all the north of it.
The I-1 to the west and north of our property out there is less than five hundred feet from our property, and then, um, just north of what you can see there, there's actually a convenience store that has two lots behind and beside it that are used for tractor-trailer parking, it's just not a, a monthly usage, it's, you know, overnight tractor-trailer parking.
I mean, there's a mobile home dealership, I see, there's, I mean, there's just a whole bunch of, a post office, I mean, there's just a whole bunch of stuff happening on that road, and I don't really see it. It's a four-lane highway, I mean, it's pretty heavily traveled, there's not that many residents off that road. But I, I don't really, I, I agree with it, and I don't really see a problem with rezoning him to, uh, I-1.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for the applicant? Ms. Green?
Tell me your concern again about the delay and...
I just shared with you, I had two, I had two conflicting, uh, opinions. Uh, the, the spot zoning is one where you're just taking, uh, there's no, uh, I-1 immediately in a contiguous or anything to this property. Therefore, you're putting I-1 in spots surrounded by R A. But R A, uh, is rural agriculture, which, uh, if it was used for agricultural purposes, you could have combines and things of that nature, which is heavy type equipment. So, I don't know, uh, you know, I was looking around, and it seemed like the, the chambers are empty, so, uh, I think if people felt that they were gonna be negatively impacted by the industrial rezoning, they would be here. Uh, so, uh, based on that, I really don't see any major problems with the rezoning. I think that the PUD with delaying, uh, for a period of time, I think that, uh, the, the amenities that we would think we are getting are really not amenities that, uh, applicable. Uh, so, you know, in this case, where it is and where it's located, and the uses that are surrounding, because I think there's a famous truck stop, uh, down, uh, at, in the vicinity, I think it's a Chevron, uh...
S O A.
It was, it was the, uh, subject of a, of a Supreme Court decision, Louisiana State Supreme Court decision. So, you have truck parking already down there anyway, so.
About, thank you. About how many spaces is there anticipated?
We haven't got a, a plan drawn up yet. Um, one of the things is we needed to know if we were gonna have to have buffer zones, um, but I would imagine it's going to be about two-hundred. But that, well, that's, depending on if we have, um, spaces rented out solely to tractor-trailer parking, that would, it would, uh, decrease the amount. But if we're able to provide RV parking or boat parking for any of the community, that's going to change the size of each parking space, so.
So these trucks may or may not have trailers on them?
Correct.
Okay.
We will provide up to seventy, I think it was seventy-two foot spots for tractor-trailers.
There's definitely an issue with parking for tractor-trailers. We know that on this board, the staff knows that, um, it's an issue, because we have so many people illegally parking that, and they get complaints on it, so. Okay, do we have any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here? I don't see anybody else, maybe that would like to come forward in support of the application? All right, seeing none, do we have anybody here that is in opposition for the application? All right, seeing none, that brings us to the board for a, for a, for action, for a motion.
I move that we approve this zoning change from R A to I-1 with the stipulation that he leave some of the trees along the fence line around it.
I'd, I'd like to add a comment to that. The trees that we're talking about, I'd like to see a ten-foot landscape buffer around the entire property, and leave those existing trees.
We okay with that?
Okay.
Okay, say that again, so I'll make sure I understand. Can you, can, well, Mr. Marshy, can you expand?
I, I was just adding an additional note. Uh, Mr. Brown was asking for a landscape buffer. What I was defining the landscape buffer as a ten-foot wide zone from the property line around all sides.
I think that would make it conducive to, to the R A per se, that's the current zone, maybe some assistance to it. So I think that is probably where this landscaping and buffer is headed.
Could I, could we speak to the owner if that, this, if ten feet's gonna work for his plan?
Hold on just, hold on just a second before we do that. I, I would like to ask Mr. Clark and Mr. Jean.
If they would take care of the things, if you just approve the rezoning, uh, or not rezoning, whatever choice, we can take care of the concern you're having about the buffers and so forth.
Right, I mean, if we, my concern is if we make the stipulation for the ten feet, I don't, I, like, mathematically, I can't get that in my head, how many square, you know, like, what that's gonna do to his layout, because I don't, I don't have the parking line. But my question is this, um, how would we, I mean, we're talking about existing trees, I mean, not all areas are gonna have a tree within that ten feet, so I'm just curious as how we would actually apply that to this, to this case.
We will maintain, make sure that he does a buffer around, around the entire, uh, parking area.
Is that, is that good enough for you, Mr. Marshy? Are we good? Okay, Mr. Marshy, okay.
The applicant seemed to have given that indication that he's willing to do that.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve as I-1 with the stipulation of a, of a, a buffer around the property. That's gonna be worked out with staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, a second by Mr. Humphrey. We're ready to vote. All right, let me make sure I read this right. All right, we have a six to zero on a recommendation for approval. Thank you for coming in. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right, that brings us to our agenda item number eight, case number twenty-two, twenty-nine P, special use permit for the cattle parish fire district number three.
Hello, I am Brian McNew with McNew Architecture, thirty-five fifty-six Yuri Drive, Shreveport, seven-eleven oh five, and I have Chief Mitchell with me here from the fire district as well. Our request today is to get a special use permit for the property that they own on the corner of Boncombe and Greenwood Spring Ridge Road. There's three lots there that they own, and, three contiguous lots, and, uh, our proposal is to develop the corner lot and put a new eleven thousand square foot manned three-bay fire station there. Currently, the, uh, fire district has an unmanned station for that area, and they're experiencing growth in that area with the church and other neighborhoods that are coming online. The unmanned fire station that they have currently is on a lease that I believe will expire in a year and a half approximately, so they're looking ahead to develop this piece of property that they purchased and put this manned station there to help with the growth that they're experiencing and with the insurance rates in that area as well. Um, the station has been designed, you'll see on the floor plans, with meeting room, that can also, uh, double as a voting booth location with the, um, public parking that we have right outside of the employee fenced-in parking area. Uh, in the staff report and review, I acknowledge the fact that, um, Alice said extend the fence down the property line, that was our misunderstanding. Um, we were under the impression we had to put the fence on just the part we were developing, which would have been the front lot. Um, so we will extend that, uh, that fence down the other two lots along the east side. Um, and, uh, also with the culvert sizing and so forth, we will, uh, we will be getting all that to the, uh, parish and D O T D. Um, D O T D came back with no, uh, issues regarding our curb cuts and drive location, uh, and we've submitted, uh, our preliminary landscape plan. The irrigation plan will come at the time of permitting or before to have a preliminary review. Um, and at this time, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Uh, just one. The two lots that are not in your plan, uh, do you intend to clear those or leave?
It's all cleared.
It is now cleared?
Yeah, everything is a hundred percent cleared and flat.
Okay, uh, I believe they were lacking a landscape, a final landscape plan, is that correct?
No, landscape plan's in there. It was irrigation plan.
I think the irrigation plan had, I'm asking the staff.
Sorry.
They had an alternative at irrigation plan.
I can't hear you, Mr. Clark.
You know, what I, what I understood was that the irrigation plan had not been submitted, but they were, thought that they were able to utilize the alternative with the sprig at, uh, fifty-foot and, and so forth for the landscaping.
Okay, thank you.
You look puzzled. Are you, was that confusing? Are you good?
Say again?
I said that, you had a puzzling look on your face.
Oh, I, yeah, um, it, it was my understanding that the landscape plan, um, we had, uh, initially, we had some landscaping missing along the Boncombe Road and Greenwood Spring Ridge side, and so we resubmitted an updated plan that had all that included. So, um, uh, so we're under the impression that the landscaping was good, and that the only thing that we were missing was the irrigation plan, which needed to be submitted prior to permitting.
Okay.
And we, we, we'll...
You'll work that out.
We'll work that out.
Okay, you get with the staff.
We're looking at the landscaping plan.
But I, I just want a clarification. We talked in the work session about, um, a misunderstanding from one of the neighboring properties about the, the property line, and the requirement for a fence there have, is that, that been, that's been taken care of with the applicant here? Because he's talking...
Well, I'm, I'm hearing what the applicant is saying, and I was under the same impression that you were, that, uh, the remaining two lots would not require being fenced in.
I thought that's what I heard.
Until such time as development occurs, but if it's the applicant's desire, then we see no reason why you shouldn't fence it in.
So, okay, well, and, and that's fine, but, uh, my interpretation of the comment that Alice had put was that, um, because we did show the six-foot fence along the east side, um, it is kind of a note that's hard to see on our, on our plan, but it is there. Um, my interpretation of the note was that we needed to continue it down lots two and three along that east side to separate the adjacent neighbor.
And I think that, and I'm sorry, Brian, but I think that the neighbor did request that, that that be done. I don't know if I would wanna look at a fire station and...
And that's fine, we can do that.
And since they've agreed to do it, I don't think any additional actions are required.
Okay, why don't I say this? We'll let you work that out with... We'll let you work that out with the staff and go over that. But there was some question about whether or not a fence, and I'm not sure now which one, was required and that since the, the boundaries, the, the property boundary had been established and that the, the particular resident that was asking about it felt, okay, after conversation, he misunderstood where his property was. Just get with the staff and y'all make sure y'all know where the fence is actually. What, y'all clear this up, okay?
Yeah, and that's fine. I think, I think we understand where it's gonna be, but we'll confirm with Mr. Clark that it's, it's that whole east side.
That's perfect.
Because his house sits back and would kind of be behind the fire station. So, yeah, we, I talked with fire chief and we're, we're good with fencing that whole side, east side.
We just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page here. Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant?
I do. And it's really probably irrelevant what I do. What are you all planning to do with the existing structure?
There, oh, it is on a private piece of property that is owned by an individual that leases it to the fire department, so it defaults back to him. And I guess he's gonna use it for his he shed.
A he shed now.
We get them off every time.
That was a good term. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you for, thank you very much. All right, do we have anybody else here that would like to speak in support? All right, seeing none, oh, you wanna come up? You can come up.
I just wanna go through the process of giving my address and zip code. Ernest Mitchell, nine-two-eight-two Lucas Hill Road, seven-one-zero-three-three. This is the silliest thing I've ever heard of. I wanna put a circle K at that location. That was a joke. We must have, we must have a fire station in that area. We're fixing to lose one a half mile away and that's gonna greatly affect our coverage. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
So the unmanned fire station, where exactly is it? Because we were informed that there were two fire stations and they were like two or three miles away. But there is an unmanned site. Is it for volunteers or?
Either one of those, that will work. The unmanned station currently is less than a mile west of this one. We do have another unmanned station at Bethany, essentially at the intersection of seventy-nine and Buncombe. So our vision with this one is, now that our revenue, thanks to our sales taxes, will allow us to hire personnel to man this station and greatly improve our service.
I just live at Greenwood, something up and down one sixty-nine, and I was just wondering where it was.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the drawing here, architectural drawing, I see in one drawing that there appears to be four bays. So how many bays will there be in the building?
Three.
Three.
The new station will have three. That was the initial drawing where we're going with four, but I, being frugal, I cut that back to three.
I see, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any more questions, we're good? Okay, thank you. All right, do we have anybody else here that would like to speak in support? All right, seeing none, do we have anybody here that would like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none. Board, what is your pleasure? Motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the special use permit as applied for.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Marshiv to approve the permit, I mean, the application as submitted. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown, we're ready to vote? All right, we have a six to zero on recommendation for approval. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for your service. Okay, that takes us to the next item, which is number nine, old business committee chair reports. We have no committee chairs at this point, so we'll skip number nine. Number ten, any new business, Mr. Clark?
I'll just include everything. I shared some information with you earlier, but I wanna, I wanna just talk real briefly about how we are evolving with ordinances and planning in the unincorporated areas of the parish. So I just want you to know, I'm listening very carefully to the things you're saying because you represent the citizens in the unincorporated areas of Cattle Parish and for, and the actual old planning limits that were in place. We, we have to start listening to those citizens, start understanding what those citizens are desiring for this portion of the parish to, to look like. And this is why we're advocating to the parish commission that we need to, to go back into the existing master plan, the Great Expectation twenty-thirty, and make it more reflective of what's actually out in the parish and not try to make it fit the needs of the city of Shreveport. I think that that was a major problem that we had. And that was a major problem for the reasons for some of the things that happened. We did not respect rural agriculture, living. We tried to put a, a square peg in a circle, a circle in a square peg, square. But we tried to force that. And when you try to force that, you fail. I'm excited, and I don't know, I share it with y'all, I don't know what the parish commission is gonna do. It may not even reestablish a contract with the Metropolitan Planning Commission. But I'm really excited about going through this process and this time doing it correctly and getting the people to engage and embrace their ordinance and not our ordinance. So I, I've been really moved by this hearing, just watching you and listening to your, your comments and listening to the dialogue and discussions that have occurred. And it just reminded me that, you know, government is only as good as it represents the need of its people. And just letting you know that if the parish of Cattle continues to have a relationship with the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and I'm around, I'm gonna ensure that the people in the unincorporated areas are heard, their desires are received, their desires are embraced. And, and you, you have to understand that we have a great diversity in, in the parish. Some people want strict, strict zoning. Other people are more concerned about, you know, allowing persons to, to sort of expand on their property, to protect their property rights. And that, that's an interesting process to pull together. But I'm excited about the possibility and we have some resources that we're gonna be utilizing. You, you've met Lauren today, or you've met, seen her, she's in Las Vegas, oddly enough. And there are other planners in, in Virginia, North Carolina, and Florida, I believe. And, and they get away from the, the sentiments of, of the people in, in the parish that said they didn't want a master plan done by someone in, in Boston. And whether I believe that it's an excellent plan, whether I believe that it aptly, aptly reflect what's in Cattle Parish, if the citizens hate it and don't accept it, it's no good. And I'm committed to, but you know, it's, it's the parish commission that will have to appropriate additional funds. But I'm very interested in going back through this process and ensuring that the people in the parish will have, even if it's a chapter in the existing master plan, would have that chapter that reflects the sentiments of the people in the parish. And if we ever do that and get beyond our own beliefs, I think that we're gonna be able to pull the city and the parish together. I still think there needs to be a relationship. I think that they're totally different, but I think there needs to be a relationship between the city and the parish. And it's, it's our responsibility to, if we are allowed, to ensure that that relationship continues. And we will have committees that we've talked about, Mrs. Newbert, that meets with the MPC, with the city, because all you ever asked for was representation. And for some reason, you could never get representation because we were so interested in piling the business community on the board that we neglected and ignored the people that were actually out there in the parish. So I'm really interested in, once we find out what our future with the parish is, that we form a, a, possibly a master plan subcommittee with representatives from the MPC, the ZPA, and the Cattle Parish Planning and Zoning Commission. I can never do those acronyms. But, and I think that that would benefit everybody so well. And I think that we would, would truly grow together. So I just wanted to share with you that I thoroughly enjoyed this hearing.
Mr. Clark?
And I haven't enjoyed a hearing in a long time.
Well, first of all, let me, let me say if I may, you know, I've got some experience from the other board, and I know y'all hear that from me, probably sick of hearing it, but, but I saw how business was done, you know, when we were combined board. And I appreciate so much that you are spot on with exactly what you just said. This, this board here today exists because we had a lot of people in the five-mile zone that were outside the city that were very unhappy with the codes under the UDC. We, we talked briefly about where we're going with this, and it just brings the question, and I think everybody on this board would wanna know this, what, what are we doing? Where are we going with this revamping of the code for the parish? And I hear what you're saying, that you're not real sure budget-wise, contract-wise, whether or not the MPC is gonna be involved in that, but let's say you are. Where are we going with this? What, how are we going to start doing something about this code? And when do you expect that we could actually take that on?
We have, we've already started some of the process. I mean, the first process was to take out of the Cattle Parish Unified Development Code to take out the MPC, because the MPC and the ZPA are no longer the governing authorities in the parish. So that's where we start with COTEX amendments that, if I'm not mistaken, that were coming before you next month to do just that. And then we, we have some ideas for significantly streamlining, if you will, the code, to take out all of the urban stuff, to take out a lot of the zoning classes that were in the existing code that was basically a mirror of the city of Shreveport's Unified Development Code and bringing it down to zoning districts that are reflective of the rural areas of, of the city, taking out all the stuff about historical preservation. In, in essence, without going into a long drawn-out.
The downtown district is another example.
Without, and downtown development, downtown districts. Without going into a whole lot of long drawn-out explanations, we are going to make the code reflective of the unincorporated areas of Cattle Parish. And one of the problems that I had that really frustrated me to no end, because I share it with you, I live in Greenwood, and I know people that live in Blanchard, we had regulations that were more restrictive outside the city limits of Greenwood and Blanchard than were in the city limits of Greenwood and Blanchard. So you tell me, over and over, I move out of the country so I don't have such restrictive ordinances, and I'm looking at, it's more advantageous for you to move into Greenwood or move into Blanchard than to continue to live out in the rural areas. So there, there's a lot of stuff that we wanna look at. Like I say, we just have to have the opportunity to look at and be allowed to. We, we know what we're doing. That's what some people don't realize. We may not have shown you in the past, but we know what we're doing. And we're gonna formulate an ordinance that I think that the people in the unincorporated areas of Cattle Parish are gonna be proud of.
Well, is that some, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Is that something that we would need to make initiative on to talk to the parish commissioners?
We will make recommend, we will bring amendments to you. You will make recommendations to the Cattle Parish Commission.
Through the amendments?
Yeah.
COTEX amendments? Okay.
And we, 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 like I said, we just have to figure out what's going on, like you said.
But I.
Then we're ready to take off and utilize some, all of these resources that we have. We have existing contracts with consultants and so forth. We're ready to take off. And they're, we're talking to them, sharing with them what our goals and aspirations are. But, you know, we, we, we have to be properly funded in order to do those things.
Well, I would like to say as one person on this board, I can't imagine that we would be better situated with anybody else at the helm of this project than your, you and your staff. So that's my opinion, you've got great depth in this. And there's a lot to be lost if that does not materialize, in my opinion, where y'all are brought into it. So I'd like to see, I personally would like to see that happen. Go ahead, Mr. Humphrey.
Well, that was basically along the lines that I was going to propose to Mr. Clark, is that being a member of this board and the BBC, that if we would, it would be in line for members of this board to be able to speak to the commissioners and to vote for. Let the board be a part of, and they pay whatever's that's needed and necessary to, to move forward. You know, that they will approve the budget so that we can move and, and accomplish the goals that have been set for.
So that just brings me, just for clarity, just to make sure we're all good. Mr. Bernstein, is there any issue with us moving forward if we so, we feel like we want to, to talk directly with the parish commissioners regarding that, that, that particular topic of?
Madam Chairman, you have to excuse me because I had to step out for a minute there. But I think I have a sense of what you're talking about. I would note that, and I think Mr. Clark would agree with this, that typically you've got, you have a master plan, a long-range master plan in place that sort of looks at what's there and makes recommendations. And that, given that outside of what's currently in the planning area, there's not at least a current master plan reflective of the interest in the rural areas that, and, and that one of the things to be considered might be, and I know there's been some discussion about what it would take to get a master plan in place. And certainly, one way or the other, it's going to take a budget.
Okay, so let me ask you the question directly.
Yeah.
Okay, since you stepped out. Can, yeah, give me just a second. If we pick the phone up or we walk into somebody's office that's on the parish commission and we say, as volunteer board, we would like to see and encourage them to move forward with the contract to retain the MPC under the direction of Mr. Clark at this point, as the body that continues to process our applications, is that a conflict? Okay. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Rachel.
Thank you so kindly. I have a nature that's sorta kind of very structured, but I'm very flexible as well. I don't know how you really wanna take that. But I'm saying that to say, I would think that I'm correct that each one of us was appointed by a commissioner, a parish commissioner.
Well, you were, you were nominated by one of you.
We were nominated, thank you, you know I like you.
Actually voted on by the entire commission.
And I'll never make a good politician, but I'll be a very good servant. So when they came to us, persons like myself was like, oh, no, I'm not sure I'm your person for that. Because I really feel the needs of people. I'm not saying they don't, you follow me? So after much prayer, I felt that I really could be an asset, voluntarily, not with any type of conflict of interest or any personal gain. If we don't start listening to people, you're gonna see our population numbers continually to decrease because it's about the people. And so Mr. Clark was very correct early on with his comments. So the commissioners are all elected officials. And many people in the community, and I'm being one of those many people, say, the people that are making the decisions for us, do they really understand the decision they're making? And so it's really been a saying in the city and in the community and the parish that those same people up there, they make these decisions and they got us all messed up or whatever. It's not very. very positive. But what I've seen happen in these few sessions that I've been on, that we've been so open, we've been so honest to feel the needs of the people, and yet and still, I think the people feel that we feel in their needs. So, we shouldn't be having this meeting right now. Many of us have gone through compliance to be on this membership roster. Many of us have taken away from our practices or whatever we do professionally to be here. And we went through all of this to prepare long-term, and not here today, that we may be here another, you know, month or so. And that's okay, if that's what was voted on, but those commissioners are elected officials, and we are servants of the people. And until we can work together for the good of the whole, for the people, we won't see our city and our parish prosper like it has. You know, think of those people that we had the last month, and we stayed to eight o'clock or so. I was still excited, I really was. I, I wasn't complaining, because we didn't rush through. And look at what those people felt today when they left. Look at that first couple, you know? We didn't want to be cun and sendin', but we listened, we heard, and we delivered, and we all walked away on the same page. So, whether I call the person that nominated me or not, the parish has not been, the parish nurse, the people have not been satisfied with the decisions that are made thus far. So, being that structured person that I am, we have to stop and look at what would make our parish, what would make our city, what would make our community grow. And that's the needs of the people. And really, overwhelmingly, I would say, the ball has been dropped. So, you know, I stand to say, get it done, and let's do the needs of the people.
Let's talk to the commissioners and tell them to vote to have these people have the-
I shouldn't be calling no one. Get it done.
Say that again?
I say, let's just talk to the commissioners on our own, whatever it may be, to approve the budget.
Yeah, well, I- We shouldn't even be having to do that.
Well, I, I would just like-
But we have to.
We have to.
Because we hear what Mr. Clark is saying, we hear what, what he's just said. So, our commissioners hold that in their hands, and as part of this, this board, the Parish Planning Commission, we have the authority to speak to them, for my, I'm concerned, and to express our, our opinions to them. Because if, who's going to take the place? Who's going to be over here to budget, to have the budget, to do what we need to do?
Well, we're going to get to the budget. Let's talk about some other things that should be considered inside that, or maybe should be discussed inside of that budget. You know, what I did was, I Googled and did some research of what could be expected of me, you know, what is a pod, and, and so things. So, I would have some informed knowledge before I make a decision or recommendation. So, I put all of that time and effort unpaid, so I could be the best person to this committee that I'm able to be. So, you, you don't do that to any people, especially your volunteers, that if you probably look at these recorded meetings and all of this visuality, probably to say, they probably say, hey, they're doing a really good job. But, and I don't want to mean that personally, but this, this conversation right here, and with a group of volunteers, we should be passing.
Let me just say this, I, I can't imagine that we would have any other option that would be better qualified to lead us in this direction than working with the MPC, with the history they have, good and bad, for where this, how this board originated. I want to also point out, we've only had two meetings, two meetings, this is one of which, right? Well, we've had six people on this board. We hadn't even gotten out of the shoot good with this, with this board. So, this is very important. Can, and I just, in my mind, I can't imagine that the commissioners are going to let this just go away, because there's nobody else to do. Go ahead, Mr. Bernstein, nobody, no-
When you say go away, I'm curious what you're basing that on.
Well, we're, we're concerned about the, the MPC not having a contract or any communication regarding a contract for, for a business after December 31st, 2022. That's what we're discussing, okay? And so, we feel the need, I mean, here we are, December 1st, okay? And so, like, it's a little scary to figure out where this is going, because if, if that goes away, that relationship goes away, there's no one else to pick that up. I can't imagine they're going to let that happen.
I don't believe that will happen, and I can, I will tomorrow have conversations with people to, about the boards, about your, this board's concerns.
Yes, yes.
And, and I have, I'll have an opportunity to do that tomorrow. And it's not that a decision was made not to do it.
Right.
It's just that it hasn't been addressed.
Well, if I may say something, as a representative and the chair of this board, it is very difficult to come to these meetings and sit here and not be in communication with the parish commissioners. I have no knowledge of what's happening. I'm the chairman, nobody else on this board has been told anything, and I would like a little bit of communication with our parish commissioners of some sort, of what we're doing here.
I, I think one of the things that makes Caddo Parish a bit unusual is that this is not a police jury, therefore, the parish commission is not the executive branch, the parish commission does not enter into contracts. In fact, the parish commission does not have the legal ability to sign a contract.
Who does?
Dr. Wilson, as the parish administrator. And so, the, the, the form of government that we have in the parish is different than you would find in the surrounding parishes. And so, for that reason, there are things that if you were in De Soto, or Webster, or Bossier Parish, where you would look to your police juror to have that initial conversation, actually here, that conversation would start with Dr. Wilson.
Okay.
And that's actually where I'm going to go tomorrow, to carry the message that, you know, there's concern about that.
Well, I can't impress that enough to get that across to him. There is concern, there's concern on Mr. Clark's part as the MPC, there's concern on my part as the board member here. And we're looking, what's tomorrow, December 1st?
Yes.
With 31 days to get this resolved. And I'm not saying it can't be done, it's just that it would be a little more professional. If we had a little more communication, we're volunteers, we take time out of our schedule to come in here and do this work for the citizens and as appointed members. And I might be, you know, being the boss here a little bit, but I've been known to do that. But I would like a little more communication, and it, it's just a respectful thing to do.
Well, and, and the, this has been a journey on everybody's part for the last four years with regard to this, and certainly there's a learning curve, and I've not heard any, from within the parish, I've not heard any concern about the functioning of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I wouldn't anticipate that. I, you know, one option would be perhaps for this body to, you know, have a resolution that it adopts to, you know, pass on to the commission to, you know, encourage the commission to, to budget the money, not only for, you know, Mr. Clark to provide the staff function, his staff to provide the functions, but also for the creation of the long-range master plan, so that that's in place, you know, whether that's done by additional work by his staff, or whether that's done by the MPC staff contracting with a consultant to come in and do it. There, there've been, there've been discussions in commission meetings about what it would take to get a master plan in place.
And that is exactly where this started, this conversation started, is what do we need to do to move forward? We're here looking at cases every day, and just today, in my opinion, we faced a case that we went through a lot just to, to approve someone to add a, a secondary dwelling on their property that by all accounts of the neighborhood was much better than what came down. And, and so, like, we have the option to look at that, right? We have the option to, to change that code, to make it make sense. But we need to understand what we need to do to get in that realm of possibility, and who's going to spearhead it, who's going to be the leader of that project, and what I need, what we need to do as a board to try to get that started. So, if a resolution is what we need.
Well, I mean, the only thing I'm concerned with is, you know, we had, there was that time when the MPC was representing both us and the city, and the parish was not represented properly. And that's why it snowballed the way it did. And I'm still concerned that since the MPC does have the relationship with the city, you have to make sure, because the city's going to keep trying to get in to where we are. City's not growing, it hasn't grown. Our area where we are is growing, and it's crazy, it's still growing with the rules that are in place. And I know there's a lot of pushback from landowners that I've talked to, that have come to me, that are still mad because they thought House Bill 697 was going to stop the MPC from being in charge of them. And that is kind of the problem right now, and we're just going to have to see, you know, that's why the commissioners are in that spot that they're in, because they're going to vote on the budget to decide-
They're politicians, and they're elected, and we're, we're nominated, okay, and we're appointed. And your point is well made, but it, I don't think, for anybody that ever followed House Bill 697 and the happenings of what went on in this chamber, and I was one of them, I was in here, that I ever think this was going to be an easy process. We were, I mean, that's unscrambling an egg. That code is huge, that's, takes time and manpower and hours of dedicated people that are knowledgeable in code to do that. I'm a contractor, I'm not a code writer, I'm a contract specialist, but I write code.
Part of the problem is people haven't seen anything change yet. So, I mean, that might be why they're looking at different options.
Go ahead, Mr. Bernstein.
And I would observe, having first gotten into city government in the 1980s, local governments do not move fast. That's been true, it is true, and it's true not just here, but it's true across the country, because I communicate with colleagues across the country. The, for better or worse, when the initial Parish Planning and Zoning Commission was created by the Parish Commission, there was not enough time for the parish, nor budget, for the Parish Commission to create a staff. Because that's your two options, you can either hire employees to do the function, or you can contract for it. There simply wasn't time. Because the best estimate of that process would have been five, maybe six months. Because once again, the, the restrictions on how government can go about creating departments, hiring employees, and that sort of thing takes time. It's not like you, not, not like me, if I was in private practice, can pick up the phone and call somebody and say, hey, you want to come work for me? So, from that standpoint, you know, that was the reason that we resulted. Now, the observation I ought to make a minute ago is that at the city level, the MPC, Mr. Clark and his staff are under the Planning Commission. In this setting, they are contracted by the parish to provide the staff function for you all. So, to the extent that there's some concern among you all with regard to how things are done, it's, you know, the, the ball is in your court, whether you do that by means of, you know, visiting with your parish commissioner, or formally adopting a resolution to say, we endorse the continuation of the Planning Commission, or whether, you know, however you go about doing that, you know, the ball's in your court with regard to that. Now, that's not that, it's not that you would make the decision necessarily, but you can take that, you take that initiative to say, this is the direction we want to go.
Oh, Mr. Bernstein, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Would it be appropriate for us to ask the staff to draft a resolution for us to start the process of developing a parish UDC, that they could present back maybe to us next month?
Sure.
As a, as a resolution?
And, and I would perhaps suggest one tweak to that, and that is that you also include in there that they give you the parameters of what would be necessary with regard to a master plan. Because I think the state statute with regard to planning commissions, and particularly parish planning and zoning commissions, envisions that there be a, a master plan adopt, recommended by you, or adopted by you, depending on which statute you look at, either adopted by the parish zoning commission, or recommended by the parish zoning commission to the parish governing authority.
So, does the area outside of the five mile zone in Caddo Parish have a master plan?
I don't know if it, if the-
Because I'm kind of confused on the requirement-
The Great Expectations Master Plan went that far. I don't know off the top of my head.
Mr. Clark.
Yeah, it only, yeah, the, the, you know, they say that the, the Great Expectations Master Plan only went within the planning area.
Exactly, and that's why I'm just like, understanding why the people in the five mile zone are required to have that master plan if they're not in an incorporated area. They're not in a city, or-
The parish, the parish is required to have one. There is a requirement that the parish have a-
But the ones that live outside of the five mile zone are not?
No, the parish is required to have one.
Okay. So, so that master plan that's for Caddo Parish and Shreveport, I thought it was just for the five mile zone of Caddo Parish and Shreveport.
The existing one.
The existing one. So, I'm wondering what the master plan for the area outside of the five mile zone looks like. Because it seems to me that's probably the master plan with one.
It, that's, that's right. And that's part of my, that's part of the reason I suggested to Mr. Marcy, what I did, was that there's not a master plan that looks like, looks at what is in the northern part of the parish, and what would be appropriate for the northern part of the parish. And so, that's the point of, of, of either through the MPC staff or through a consultant, of developing that master plan.
So, let's see, that's where I'm confused, is so, the people that live north of here, like towards Oil City and Vivian, are they subject to the master plan that we have in place for Caddo and Shreveport?
No.
Why don't, why aren't they required to have one?
Because at the, the long term, for the longest time, back since the 1950s, everything was done under the state statute, the Shreveport, Caddo Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission statute. And that put in place the master plan process for the, that was the city of Shreveport and the planning area.
Yeah, but wasn't severed?
Now that, now that that's, now that that's not controlling.
Right.
Then the parish should have a master plan, parish-wide.
Okay.
And, and that master plan would be under your purview to see that it's done, and to then, you know, if you desire, send it up to the parish commission, for the parish commission to bless.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, see, well, I'm, I'm not confused, because I think basically what he just said is, in the 1950s, when all this came about, that five mile zone was established as part of the mandate. And when that went away in that five mile zone, we still have a requirement to provide a master plan, so we need to get our own. But the area outside, am I correct, Mr. Bernstein, the area outside that original five mile zone was never covered by the master plan, because it was not in the geographical area of the five mile zone and the City of Shreveport to begin with. So, this then brings the question that I've heard debated a little bit at the parish commission, and that is, do we want this master plan, the one that we're embarking upon, that we're, we're talking about doing, is it going to be a parish-wide document? Or is it just going to be a five miles, it's going to be that area we on this board represent? That's the question. I think that's why you're confused. Does that-
I mean, a little bit, but I kind of thought that House Bill 697 kind of did away with that relationship between the city and the parish that was married together. It broke that relationship, which I think it would- which I think it would also take away that requirement in that five-mile zone because now you don't have that relationship of needing a master plan. I really don't think we even need a master plan anymore.
But we have a UDC that's in, in place. And that is a one, right?
And we do, and that's the problem.
And that's what we're gonna work on, right? That's what we're gonna work on. Mr. Bernstein, can you get us an answer to that?
Sure.
Uh, did you understand where, what Mr. Brown was saying?
I do. I do.
It's, it's a valid question.
Meaning then, well, I like this stuff. Meaning then, in just, just your, your, your opinion, then if we don't base on you, need a master plan, then that means that anyone outside the city limits can do their own thing?
No.
No, no, no. We still have, there's still the UDCs in place that the parish commissioners will have to amend or do away with. And we, and then we'll suggest new planning and zoning through Clark and the staff if it continues on past January. But then that's still, even if we approve it, it's not done until the parish approves it. So the commissioners would have to, at the end of the day, they have to approve it and change it.
So, Mr. Clark, when you talk about this, 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 this topic of conversation, when you say master plan, you mean master plan. You don't mean UDC. And when you say UDC, you mean UDC. Cause they're, they're.
We're just referring to what's in existence now.
And, and so are we grandfather or still running under the twenty-thirty master plan at this point?
We have to be because they never got rid of it. And they never got rid of the UDC.
And that's.
That's what we're just trying to update. As the city updates its portion of the master plan, this would be an excellent opportunity.
Gotcha.
If the parish is inclined to update their portion that's in the twenty-thirty.
I understand now.
Expectation. And, and Mr. Bernstein is, is alluded to, he's always told us that, you know, the parish-wide needs a master plan. But, uh, you know, that's, that's something that is far beyond our authority. But, uh, you know, I think that it may be something that the parish commission would have to, it would not.
Yeah, I'm not sure they wanna touch that. I'm not sure they wanna touch that. I, I think that's some of that I, I hear and I've heard in past meetings. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a keg of dynamite. And we've been talking about bringing in, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not something that I think would be well received.
Yeah.
You, you, you've dealt with the thing that, you know, we, we, it's, it's important in my appreciation. And I may be totally wrong. It's important, like you said, to periodically have these discussions to understand what you do, who you are, why are you here, and what your responsibilities are as a continuation of the training that we're saying we're trying to provide for this board. So I think you had an excellent dialogue and discussion today. And, you know, it may be something we do every, every month.
Well, we wanna guide this and the direction that we feel like it needs to go as board members, right? I mean, and we need to be the peak, we, I mean, I don't wanna just come in here and come to meetings and look at, look at cases. I mean, that's part of it. But we have so much work to do. And I don't want it to just be something that just keeps put, we just keep putting it back and putting it back. We need to fix it.
And the planning so that we have something that reflects our area. It'll make everybody's jobs a lot easier.
And, and I was doing, wanted to go back and get some language while we were talking. Here's what state law says. A parish planning commission shall make and adopt a master plan for the physical development of the unincorporated territory of a parish. Period.
Period. Okay. So if we don't have a planning commission, then it's not required.
That's us. That's us. Right. Right. So that's our, our.
If you did away with all of it, you know, now what it, it goes on because the, a master plan is not just addressing zoning. It's going to address things like, um, where railroads and highways and streets might go in the future. It would address where there are utilities and, uh, all sorts of different developments might go. And as you see, you know, sometimes when the cases come up, the staff says, this is consistent with the master plan. This is not consistent with the master plan. It's intended to be a guide to you. But you don't have that guide. And the guy that you do have, we know, isn't a good fit. So that would, you know, it'd be entirely appropriate for you all to take charge of getting a master plan in place for the parish that is a good fit for the parish.
What is, who's the, um, approving body of that?
The parish commissioners.
I don't know. I'm asking.
Well, the, the money would come from the parish commission, the planning commission. You, you yourselves are the ones that would adopt the master plan.
So it would go out of this chamber into the commissioners for approval? I'm asking that, cause I mean, I.
Yeah, we would, they would have to approve.
The general practice around the state, under state statute, is that the planning commission adopts the master plan. Period. The previous statute that the act took the parish out of provided that it was recommended by the parish municipal planning commission to the city council and to the parish commission. And given the, um, situation in Caddo Parish at this point, it would probably be, uh, reasonable for the planning commission to recommend it to the parish commission for their final approval.
But would, would we have to recommend it to them for their final approval?
Really?
Not really?
That's what I'm asking.
You know, because it's, because it's what it says. A parish planning commission shall adopt. Not, not recommend, shall adopt.
Okay.
I think you have to bear.
That might fix the whole problem really.
Bear in mind, uh, while, while you're going down this, this rapid trail, that in order to get this done, there has to be some funding to get this done. You ignore parish commission, that, that's not happening to money, and you don't either.
We've already spent the money.
You know, I think parish commission needs to be very much included in the process.
Yeah, no doubt. Uh, uh, I mean, spending their money's easy, right? I mean, we've already spent it all right here.
Yeah.
Um, no, but just looking ahead to see, you know, this is new territory for all of us, Mr. Clark. You know, we're a new board. And, and this is a new thing altogether. So I'm excited about it. I think we can do a good job. I think we can do a good job under your leadership. And I think that's what we need to push for. But, um, so I'm gonna ask this, and then we'll move on.
One more thing too. And I think it's very unusual sometimes, you got one hundred percent of all of us on the same page.
That's what we, that's what we're striving to do.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what, that's what it's proving. That you're all from different parts of the parish.
Yes.
But you have one desire, and that's make the parish better.
Wow, that's unusual. One hundred.
And I'm gonna be quiet so she can adjourn. She said you didn't wanna be here today.
Yeah.
All right. So, uh, Mr. Bernstein, what would, just so we're guided on the record, and I'm not sure the procedure here, cause we're out in a new area. Um, I think if, if everybody agrees that we might ask then, um, under the leadership of Mr. Clark and his staff, that a resolution, um, be drafted for us to consider approving next month and next month's business that would, A, address the need to, uh, build or design a brand-new master plan for the parish of Caddo in, in the area that we're in jurisdiction of, and that's questionable, what, that that's parish-wide or not. And then B, um, uh, I guess notify them to some degree that we would like, we're gonna start undertaking the code, uh, editing the codes, um, to, to be more applicable to the, the parish residents.
Yes, and I think that Mr. Bernstein, that's attorney over there, he knows what we're trying to say and what you're recommending, what we're recommending. And so, so help us to formulate it in a manner that, um.
Shouldn't we wait to see how this pans out for the meeting that they're having tomorrow?
Well, they can draft it.
It's just a resolution. I think we need to start the process.
Tomorrow's meeting could take fifteen minutes.
Oh, wow.
And, and look, we're not gonna meet again until, what, the twenty-eighth? So we have the whole month to figure out what's going on. And it doesn't have to come up on the agenda. If it's not, not applicable on the agenda, then we'll just, we'll postpone it. It doesn't have to be on the agenda, right?
They know what we're trying to say and do. And I think we're all on the same page about the need for it in this group, so.
Mr. Clark, you have the magic words for that?
We accept what y'all are trying to do.
Okay, so you can, you can represent us with that, with that language. Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on because it's getting late. Um, so I think that was number nine, number ten, number eleven, Mr. Clark, you have a director's report?
I've given it.
Okay. We, do we have any public comments from anybody in the lobby?
Nope.
No? Okay. We're empty out there. Okay, number twelve, the chair and board members comment, uh, comments. Okay, so we talked last month about nominating, uh, a co-chair and a secretary. Am I right, Mr. Clark?
Yeah.
And we were gonna take that up in this business, right?
You need to do a nominating committee, and they need to bring nominations back. Or you could do it, I guess. Have an attorney see it from, attorney, you can do it from the floor.
Can we do it from the floor, Mr. Bernstein, to simplify this? We did the original one from the floor.
Yes, ma'am. The, the one thing I'm looking at is that that's not an agenda item.
We can have it on the agenda next.
So probably would, might be best to put that on for the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then if you want to, we, you could do it either way. You can have nominations from the floor or if you wanted to appoint, uh, a committee to, you know, come up with nominations. But given the size of the commission, it's.
What is your preference, board?
Maybe just let you dominate, chair.
I mean, do we wanna do it from the floor? Do we wanna, I, I think it, my preference is to do it from the floor.
Why don't you maybe just say from the floor?
Uh, just like sitting here, instead of sending somebody off to do this and come back with a recommendation.
That's too much work.
Yeah.
Nominated from the floor.
I'm, I'm from the floor kinda girl, so. We're good. You're good, Ms. Ms. R? From the floor? Mark Lauren, you good from the floor? You always have a holdout.
I think you need to do some background asking who wants to do what.
Well, well, okay.
And not in a public meeting.
You sure?
You don't ask who will be the vice chair in a public meeting.
Well, you was, uh, what was gonna happen?
That's what I'm telling you.
Y'all take the word off the list. Okay, um.
We'll just put it on the agenda items and then we can all talk.
Okay, let's do that. And we'll figure it out.
It would be on your December agenda.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Okay, um, any other comments from board members? No? Mr. Mr. Clark, have we wore you out yet?
We're good.
You're good? Okay, so I, I would like to thank, thank you for your leadership. And, um, if we have more at business, we are adjourned, y'all. Five o'clock, exactly.
Bob, right on the dot.
We were trying, we were trying to stretch it out to five.